Everybody's here so we can get going in the Thursday, April 16th, meeting of the Winchester Select Board. With me today is Select Board members Susan Verdickio, who serves as Vice Chair, Marianne Boba-Buffett, Amy Shapiro, Jackie Welch, Town Manager Lisa Wong, from the Town Manager's Office, Patty Mihalic, and Mike Betancourt, who serves as Chair. And so we'll get going. So we have two items on the agenda. The State of Emergency, which has been an ongoing agenda item for us, as well as the three-year financial plan. So Lisa, did you want to start with the financial plan first to get things going? I saw that it came in last night, so I didn't really have too much of a chance to look at the budget, but I think we can probably go through it and answer questions.
Sure, I just want to make sure, did everybody get it?
I did. Yep.
Okay. So what I did is I updated the three-year projections, the three years, meaning fiscal year 20, 21, and 22, so the current one that we're in, the one that is under budget development and the one after that. So two days ago, there was a consensus hearing at the state level that predicted a 20% drop in state revenue. So I wanted to reflect that current scenario. And I talked to Senator Lewis yesterday as well to kind of get his take on where the state might be going in response to that 20% drop in revenue. And he said that there's two things that are probably going to happen. So one is that there's some federal reimbursements that are going to be happening or some federal money that's coming in. And there's also a pretty sizable rainy day fund. So both are options to offset any drop in revenue. But on the safe side, what I did is I went through the budget and I predicted, or I just ran the scenario of a 20% reduction in '21 for new growth, the Cherry Street, Sheet Street, State Aid, and the local receipts. So you'll see that reflected in the budget that I sent you in red. You'll see that the percentage drop at 20%. I then went through the expense side and then reflected a number of the changes that have happened. So I put the public safety contracts in the budgets. I took them out of an allocated wage line item. And I made some other minor adjustments that I detailed in the email that I sent you. And the bottom line is that we're, with a 20% reduction across the board in those various line items, we're looking at a $3.2 million deficit in the next fiscal year. This still assumes using $2.4 million in the override. And then I ran a scenario that showed a 10% reduction in state aid and local receipts. I kept the 20% reduction in new growth, and that would result in a $1 million deficit. We still have $1.3 million left in override capacity. So we have a potential combination of using the rest of that in '21 and/or making various cuts. And I outlined, I think, just over $2 million in potential cuts that we could look at. So when we project out to '22, again, the 20% scenario using up the override has a $4.4 million deficit, and then a 10% reduction scenario has a $2.2 million deficit. And those 4.4 and 2.2 are net of using up the override. So the email actually has, so I highlighted all the changes in red, and then I emailed, you know, cell by cell exactly what the assumptions were in those cells.
So can I ask a really dumb question? When you talk about local receipts, does that include property taxes?
Nope. So property taxes are the very first line item. So property taxes are under that very first section. And then local receipts are under, like, the second section. So there's, in revenues, we start off with property taxes. So that has that 2.5%, it has the new growth, it has the Chapter 110, it has the debt overrides. So those are all like the quote-unquote typical real estate taxes or debt exclusions. And then there's a whole section on state and local receipts. So this includes the Cherry Sheet, which is the compilation of different things that we get, including lottery assistance. And then the local receipts is underneath that as well. And then there's a very long list of local receipts. It's everything from library book finds to rentals, to excise tax, to building permits.
Okay, so, thanks. Yeah, so you're assuming that we, you know, there's no real downtrend in people paying their property taxes.
So we can fully account for the 2.5% because it's a fixed number.
Okay. That's all I'm trying to clarify. Thank you. Okay.
Lisa, the new growth revenue, would that hate us in FY '21? I mean, I assume that most of the new development that goes into new growth would have already happened before COVID-19. So are we really expecting a 20% decline in new growth, given that we're almost at the end of the fiscal year?
You know, that is a good question. So I just, I'll be honest, I just put in the most conservative number possible.
Understood.
I think that you're probably right and that, because at the end of fiscal year, we'll actually, when we certify new growth at the end of this year, we'll actually see probably a number better than this one.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if we have any projections from the Building Department or from the assessors on that because, you know, there's a $130,000 difference there. So if you have a good projection on that before going into town meeting, that might help.
Yeah, and not yet. I mean, it's really hard to tell at this point in time. So they're just starting to see a slowdown, but, you know, who knows?
So thanks for, so Lisa, Town Manager Wong, thank you so much for taking the time to do this. It's very helpful for us to be able to kind of keep up with these numbers in real time. And we know you're doing so many other public health emergency-related activities. So we're really grateful for you also, you know, like I say, in real time, giving us this information.
Yep, of course, I'll keep you updated.
And just to give everyone a little bit of background as a reminder, the Charter provides that the Select Board is the policymaking body for the town. So the budget is ours to decide. And when we don't decide or we make decisions that are inconsistent with our policy, some of those decisions will be made for us. And we can wait to see what FinCom's reaction is or what town meeting is. But it's pretty risky, especially during this time. So if you saw the memo from the School Committee, this was prior to the revenue meeting yesterday. You know, the school budget that was proposed, which was a very modest 3% increase, was cut to 2.7%. That cuts into a lot of the promises that we made to residents during the override. So, you know, we've got to, you know, we have to make some hard decisions about the budget. And, you know, a lot of these issues came up prior to the pandemic. So we are looking at certainly some downside if we're on the front end of a recession of 10% to 20%. I think people were targeting in other communities around that 20% number. But we, you know, there's some pretty big numbers here that have been moving around quite a bit. So it's, you know, kind of our responsibility to direct where we want funds to go. And as I said last meeting, we've, you know, we've been kind of shifting policy in the sense that what we choose to support financially is an indication of what policies that we support and what we present to the community. So, you know, there's, you know, I think that we just got this last night. I don't know how much of it people have digested yet, but, you know, we're going to have to be making some hard decisions for the next few years. And we haven't talked about another override yet, but, you know, I'm hoping we can have that conversation because we're targeted for a debt exclusion override for the Lynch School in fiscal year '22. That is something that's been long awaited, and it's certainly going to be a tax impact at a difficult time. But the way the MSBA partners with us is that we keep along that schedule where '22 would be the time. We could do it earlier, but we still have to do the feasibility study and do that work. So there's not a lot of time for us to move that number around. So if we are looking at an operating override in order to balance this budget, you know, there is probably going to be some political headwinds that we need to face as well, you know, should we choose to do so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very concerned with conversation about another override when, at the same time, we're having a conversation of not living up to what the voters voted for in the override last year. Right, so the projections for FY '21 for school increase were 5.5%, around that much, when we went to the voters for the override. And, I mean, I know that I passed flyers to voters with specific things that the override would pay for. And so FinCom's recommendation to essentially balance the budget on the back of the education budget just seems that we're going back on what we promised, what the voters voted for, 60% in favor voted for the override. So while the projection was around over 5%, the schools came back with a 3.7% needs-based budget, which I think is very responsible, and I thank the superintendent and the School Committee for that. The enrollment didn't go up as much as was projected. So, you know, they didn't go and ask for the full 5.5% that was projected when we put it in front of the voters. They went for what was needed. And to cut that to 2.7%, I mean, I understand that we have some revenue issues and, you know, maybe scaling back the 3.7% to a different number and see what the impacts are. But to cut it back to 2.7%, that's a huge cut. And if it results in going back on what we told the voters that the $10 million override was going to pay for, it's going to be very tough to go back in a year or two and ask for another override to pay for the things that they already voted for. So that's, so I think we need to be very careful with where the cuts come from.
Right, so I'm glad, Lisa, you have gone through and identified some things where we could have some reductions within the town budget. My sense from hearing from certain people in the Finance Committee, you know, we had a sort of conversation yesterday, is the rules have changed. It's no longer, you know, we're in the midst of this pandemic and we're looking ahead to what could be a deep and lengthy recession. I think, you know, do I wish that we had had more of a chance to get together, have a tri-board meeting, to really discuss how to respond to our present context first, rather than having them go ahead and start with the school budget? But that's what they had in front of them. So I think it's good that we discuss as a committee some of the things that you've identified as ways to scale back.
When we had a conversation with FinCom in the schools yesterday, we kind of wanted to know where FinCom is going. They cut the school budget by that amount unanimously. They cut the other asks that we had kind of out of hand. And this was really before some of these more difficult conversations about the 20% revenue decline that we anticipate. And so we said, are you looking to cut to limit everyone to 2.5% in your budget? And they said, well, 2.5%, sure, but maybe 2%. You know, so it's, they also had indicated that they're interested in increased funding for the OPEB liability. And, you know, there are, we have hired, you know, quite a few employees since we've had an actuarial study. And so I think that they're kind of on a different page than we are as far as what is being funded and how is being funded. But, you know, they did say, on the general government side, that our contracts are something that they know that we're obligated to fund, but are making it difficult in, you know, other parts of the budget. So that was our conversation with them yesterday. But I think it probably makes sense for all of us to get together, as Susan suggested.
I'd just make some general comments that, I mean, certainly seeing multimillion-dollar deficits is not something you want to wake up to the morning and start to think about. But I actually think that we're in a pretty decent financial position, given that we have options, given that this is a pretty conservative budget, given that there are probably other income sources, given that we're actually not using any one-time revenue. We're not doing a drawdown on any of our reserve funds like we have in past budget cycles. So I actually think we have the opportunity to weather the storm. I put in a 3% growth for the schools because I don't agree with the 2.77. I spoke with Ellen and Judy yesterday, and I really don't think the schools should be, you know, facing any layoffs. I think they should be continuing to grow and make, you know, make key investments. There are certain investments that they'll still have to push off, but I think a 3% is a fair compromise. They start off at, I think, 3.5 or 3.6, which is still very conservative. But, you know, if FinCom ends up cutting them further, again, there's some minor dollar savings there. So I actually think that we can weather the storm. And if we do end up getting a little bit more state revenue and things rebound a little bit in fiscal year '23, so I'm talking even beyond the three-year model, we actually, there is a scenario that we can actually have the override last four years. I think the big variable is going to be the school budget and then what happens with any growth because we anticipate Cambridge Street, River Street, the CVS site, you know, a lot more school population. So that's really the big variable. But so, you know, all in all, even though it's a series of unpleasant decisions, it's not anything fatalistic. It's just tightening our belt. And that's where I think putting this in this context maybe will help FinCom reevaluate and look at all their decisions as a whole. You know, they're kind of making cuts a little blindly without this analysis. So I sent this to them as well, and maybe we'll discuss it further next Wednesday. And then by the time we have town meeting, we'll have a better sense of how much more the state's going to provide, and then we can make decisions then.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it is FinCom's responsibility to put a budget in front of town meeting. That's, you know, that's what the Charter says. But I think that, you know, to say, to recommend a budget that requires layoffs at the schools and yet still not cut at all the funding to pay for benefits 30 years in the future, doesn't seem, that doesn't seem to have, you know, if we're in a crisis, then maybe we should reduce a little bit what we're saving up to pay for benefits 20, 30 years from now. You know, but they didn't reduce, but it's still $350,000, just as originally budgeted there, so.
Yep, so I didn't even take that out either, but, you know, that's under a worst-case scenario, so.
Yeah.
I think we also had forecasted and provided numbers as part of the override budget last year. So, you know, I think it's, you know, our job to kind of look to see where changes in what we had forecasted as part of the override budget. The schools have a, they recommended 3.7% because we asked them to spread out their asks over a period of years, where we have changed other budgets to accelerate increases. So, you know, it's, I don't think that they are, it was not my understanding that they were recommending layoffs at the school level. And I didn't believe that that was a consequence of what they were doing. I think that they were trying to balance the budget in a way that wasn't funding the requests on the school side that came out of the override. So in other words, using the override to compensate other general government increases. So that's the reality of it. I mean, I think that, like I said, they were unanimous in their vote. We had a conversation with them yesterday. They were kind of at this point prior to this discussion of decreased revenue. They only briefly mentioned that they wanted to look at OPEB again. So, you know, I don't want this to be a fight on the floor of town meeting where we're presenting different budgets that are drastically different because I think that ends up, honestly, impacting the schools at a time when there will be enrollment increases. And it really, it cuts into a little the trust that the community has put into us to responsibly message what the override is about and what we're spending that money on. So to the degree that there's a difference in what we've been budgeting for those departments, I think it's our responsibility not just to say, let's wait and continue to see what FinCom does, and hopefully that they will have, you know, a new perspective and realize that the schools should be funded at 3%. They issued quite a large report on what they thought the school budget in particular needed and how they wanted to fund it. And they acknowledged that we were still under compensating teachers. So we'll be looking at new teacher contracts in probably '23, I guess. So we're, you know, we still have headwinds in that sense that, you know, it wasn't my impression that they were open to kind of a discussion on this. They had started off at 2.5% increase on the school side, and they moved to 2.77% or whatever they ended up being. So, you know, it's, I think that there are some tough decisions here to make, but, you know, we can't do it all. And I know that we've been reluctant to discuss plan changes to health insurance. Again, that's another tool we have that really, you know, hurts municipal employees again. And, you know, after, we can't every year keep on diminishing the quality of healthcare for municipal employees in order to balance budgets in other departments. I mean, it's just, it ends up taking away the value of what we offer.
Mike, based on your conversation with FinCom yesterday, can you talk a little bit about any assumptions that they're making, given the current environment and, you know, the potential of a recession, all those things? Are there any assumptions that they're making that they've talked about? They didn't show anything?
No, I mean, their conversations actually happened prior to this decreased revenue forecasting. So, and we asked that question at the end. You know, going into recession, are we looking at 2.5% as what we should be expecting? And they kind of said, well, yes, but also 2%. You know, I mean, they're looking at lower, you know, increases along that. So it's, and, you know, I think, sorry.
I was just going to say, it sounds like they're just generally conservative in terms of the numbers.
Well, they were conservative with, you know, when we first issued the budget. I think that they kind of started an increased analysis of what our finances were and what was going on. And this was back in February. And so, you know, it's, of course, we can put forward whatever budget that we want, and we can kind of try to battle it out on the floor of town meeting. That's happened before. I think it's going to be more difficult if we are, it's not a good outcome either way, but also it's going to be difficult for us, if we are in a remote setting, to have those kinds of discussions and really advocate for what our position is. But I think at the least, we should target on, what did we promise the voters? And are we following through on those promises?
So one of the other things that the Finance Committee Chair said yesterday was that they have a tool, a sort of a three-year projection that they're working on, and that's not quite finished. So I'm thinking, Lisa, this is maybe the time to be communicating with them, both, you know, as a committee and, you know, you as town manager with these projections. And that, sort of at the end of the conversation, they sort of came back to the idea that we hate to hire people only to be laying them back off, laying them off the following year. So the gist of, my understanding of the gist of their approach is that it's more of a hiring freeze that they're hoping to do. So, you know, some of the things that we are looking at here, we're going to have to consider. You know, I think it's only, it's only fair for everybody to tighten their belt. Although I hate the idea of the plan changes under our health insurance, I know that that has drawn some ire in the past. I think we all recognize that the whole realm of health insurance and costs is something that's kind of beyond any of our control individually. So that's something I think we should think about doing.
Actually, the Sheriff FinCom just reached out to me about the hiring freeze. So we'll discuss that more next week. So, I mean, my initial recommendation is that it would be for non-essential personnel only. I mean, we're so far behind in police and fire, and we're actually losing money not having them on board. So I think that makes sense.
What is the, Lisa, what's the overall increase or impact of the police and fire contracts that we voted on last week? It looked to me, just glancing at it, that it's like a 20% increase?
Oops, I just lost the page. So their contracts are embodied in the public safety budgets right now. So if I just went to public safety. So it's a 4.91% increase to next year and then a 7.28% increase to next year. So it's a, it's a four point nine one percent increase to next year and then a seven point two eight percent increase to the following year.
Retro for this year?
So, this year. Yeah, this year their, their budget was pretty minor. So when I say it was like maybe like a hun, I don't know, it was a two percent this year, I don't remember the number, but. But yeah, for the, the impact for next year is less than a five percent increase and then a seven point three for the following year.
And then the, and we had budgeted two percent on those?
So I budgeted two percent for everyone else, um clerical and non-union.
But when we had the, the override budget um going into this year. And I'm just trying to, to look and see what, what was there on that specific line item. We had kind of forecasted for two percent, I should say, I guess.
I don't think so. I think that there was some sort of three-year average. That was done. Yeah, I don't remember that specific line item, but um. Yeah, we anticipated more than a, a two or two and a half an increase, especially in public safety.
So are those items consistent with our um, what we projected?
So I, um, the fiscal year twenty budget is consistent because that has an override budget. I, I didn't put a three-year financial plan for the fiscal year twenty twenty. So the last uh, the last three-year fiscal, sort of the last three-year fiscal financial plan was done before the override. And I.
I'm just saying, as far as what, we, we kind of asked everybody with the override budget to, you know, we, we had some forecasting there to see. If we got the override, how would we plug that into our?
Yeah, so. Um, I mean, that was done over a year ago and I, I don't. I don't have easy access to that on my computer right now.
What we have kind of done in the past too, I, I, I think Susan's idea is a good one um to kind of move the process along. As if we get together with the Finance Committee and the school side. And um, maybe ask the, the comptroller to weigh in on uh budget impacts. And um, uh advise us a little bit on what we um, you know, where, if there are um. You know, risks or benefits to doing things a certain way. Yeah, as I said, we're, we're, we're going into um some financial headwinds. But there might be some um savings for us to employ as well, uh independent of just um, you know, hiring freezes. I, I mean, I understood the hiring freezes from the Fin's com- FinCom as being um, kind of the baseline.
From a management standpoint, a hiring freeze across the board would not be appropriate. Again, especially for police and fire, especially for fire where there's, you know, the next civil service exam is the end of this year. And um it's our one shot to hire new people. We have people that are leaving. We have people that are retiring. So, I mean, if we don't hire more people, we're gonna end up with closing a station, not meeting, minimum manning. It's, it's gonna be a disaster, so. So, my recommendation continues to be.
Lisa, when you say at the end of this year, you mean in June? Do you mean December?
I think the next civil service exam cycle is September.
Okay.
And that will res- it's, I mean, the, the civil service issues exams very infrequently. And we have people that sign up to take it to also leave, as well as people who sign up to hopefully come here. So, I mean, we're down, we're down many, many positions. We've been waiting for this September exam for quite some time.
How many?
I also think we should remember that, you know, during the whole campaign for the override, we talked, we, we worked really hard, I think. To make sure that people understood that it wasn't just for schools, that there was a municipal piece to it as well. And I think we talked a lot about fire and, and uh police and ensuring that we were in a good position with our public safety. So, um, you know, I think it's just important to remember that the override included some municipal services as well, not just the schools. Now, I'm not saying that schools are not important, but.
Talked about additions. I mean, I'm talking about getting to the level. So the override assumed that um we weren't gonna hire any new firefighters. But it, it didn't assume that we were going to lay off any public safety personnel. So, I'm just trying to get to that um, you know, that position where we're as fully staffed as possible. If we're talking about layoffs or we're talking about a reduction in force. Beyond what was in the override, then that, that's another story.
Also, you know, the override, when we presented to the special town meeting uh last year before the override vote. We projected that we would use the full ten million dollar capacity. Uh at the time, it was a twelve million dollar override and then we cut it from a three-year override to a two-year override. So from twelve to ten million, but the whole ten million was gonna be used in FY twenty-one. So, you know, I mean, I know we're, you know, if we're talking about losing certifications and things like that. To save levy capacity for next year, that's not what we told the voters. We told the voters that the ten million would be used by FY twenty-one.
I, I don't, I don't think that, I think we're talking about two very different things. So I don't think anybody's, has indicated layoffs. And I don't think, you know, anyone has talked about uh, uh underfunding um our police and fire to where they would lose accreditation. So we had very specific asks um of the community for uh public safety. We said X amount of firefighters, we, you know, got a, a grant for uh certain firefighters and we wanted to fund that. Police and fire, adding a dispatcher, we did those things. I don't think we're talking about. I, I think we do a disservice um to our, the work that we need to do when we go from being financially responsible. To saying, well, we can't do that because then we're talking about cutting staff. I don't think that's what we're talking about. We're, we're talking about how, what is different from what we proposed. Um and uh, what, what do we need to do in order to maintain what we promised? So, it, it was a benefit that we didn't, um, I think that we uh, we worked hard and we were, we were lucky as well. We didn't have to spend what was um, what we anticipated uh in the first year of the override. But to the degree that we're spending in the second year of the override on things that we didn't present to the community. Then, uh you know, I, I think that's the, the work that we need to do. I, 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 I don't know. I mean, I, I'm, I'm looking at these numbers for the first time. It's the first time that I'm hearing of um cutting um staff. Or cutting um em- employees. Um, you know, I, I, I didn't think that that was anything that anybody discussed.
I thought the number, um, I mean, I, that's what I just heard, that a hiring freeze would cause us to lose, you know. That we haven't been able to hire all the people that were on the override because of the uh, the exam hasn't happened yet. So, uh, I think a hiring freeze, I agree with Amy that uh, you know, the override was not just for the schools. And that I think we, you know, we should continue with the plans and we shouldn't have a hiring freeze just uh, you know, and indiscriminate uh hiring freeze.
Yeah, I don't think it's indiscriminate. I mean, I think that we're talking about the same thing. We presented um something to the voters for the override. And we should fund what we um, what we promised them and, and that's it. So, um, if there are people that we haven't hired um as a result of um that budget. Of course, they, I, we would continue, we would hire at that, at that level. You know, we, um, I think part of the issue is that we've made some contractual decisions that impact the budget significantly. That one weren't anticipated. And um, you know, I, I think those affect those departments. We've, we've asked the, the schools to hold off on hiring, to spread their budget out over a period of time, but we're not doing the same. So, um, you know, it's um, um, I, I, I think it's a, uh, it's a, it's a tough time to ask the schools. To bear the brunt um of um some of these other departmental uh increases. That weren't anticipated um last year. I mean, this wasn't like ten years ago. Um and uh, you know, so it's, it's just the work that we have to do. It's uh, as I said, it's a policy shift for us. It's um something different that we're doing. Um, so.
So I'm not quite understanding. So, the public safety departments have higher increases. Than we all anticipated, right? They're probably higher than any budget projection that we have. So, are you saying that because of that, we need to absorb those increases within those departments? Or that's a major decision so that we should actually reduce the size of those departments and not hire as many as we want to? Even just to get, because, because there really isn't um. Like, at, at least in the fire department, we didn't ask for any additional staff. Um, we did want to um backfill for grant positions. So you're saying that it's on the table to not hire those four firefighters? And then for the police department, we hired one police officer and a one and a half dispatcher. So it's on the table to uh reduce the force by that amount in order to absorb the quote-unquote extra. Extra compensation that we're giving them? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
No, I, I think that's very far from, you know, what I'm, what I'm saying. But, you know, when we had a, a conversation with FinCom, asking them what their rationalization was. Or, you know, decreasing um on the school side and looking to decrease everywhere across um the departments. They indicated the, you know, that we executed large contracts for DPW for fire and for police. That's just the reality of the nonsense. So, those contracts have um unanticipated budget impacts um for the town. And so, my point is that that's fine, we can do that. Um, but it is, um, it's not something that we, we had a conversation with. Um when we went to the override last year, that we would be uh affecting the budget on the public safety side. So, it, it's, I, I just want to have a conversation about the, the budget impact of those contracts. Because we, we hadn't really um had that. And now we can see where, how, the reality of it is it, um, it comes out of other departments, you know.
Yeah, so let, let me be clear, because I said this to Judy and Ellen. I said, their school budget did tremendously well. So based, based on what we projected for fiscal year twenty-one, the school department did better. And the municipal department fared worse in terms of a higher cost. The net impact was actually a net positive uh because again, we are supposed to use a hundred percent of the override in fiscal year twenty-one. So the amount that the schools decreased and the amount that the municipal government increased because of the contracts. Still resulted in a net positive prior to um the reductions in state aid. So, I mean, it, it's a, it's a moving, it's a moving target, right? So, and it, and it didn't, I didn't say I'm gonna give the police and fire more money because the schools are doing better. I knew that the schools were doing better on target, so I knew that we had a certain amount to spend and that we would still end up in the positive. In terms of trying to have a three-year override. So, uh, you know, and then I, I can't speak for the override committee because I came in at the tail end of it. I do know that I was the one that had to put pen to paper. Um, and again, having been here for three months. Before putting pen to paper, uh, I, at least, I, I knew in my head then that the fire department was significantly underfunded. I can't, you know, say exactly what was in the budget then. And I also would hate to be held responsible to say that whatever I decided, being three months in on the job. Taking over what an override committee worked on for a year is now going to be a big determinant in um fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. I think that there are huge new assumptions. Um, and I would, you know, I can defend, you know, the twenty-one budget. Um, I think very, very well, much better than I could have defended it back in February of um, of uh twenty nineteen. I also, like I said, I've laid out, I've laid out a scenario that will help us balance the budget for twenty-one and for twenty-two. And, you know, potentially extend the override to twenty-four. So, difficult decisions would have to be made. Um, I've laid out what most of those would be. In terms of a hiring freeze, I put a two hundred thousand dollar number, so it's not like a mass, I mean, that's like. You know, two or three positions depending on the department. So, i- it's not a, a massive effort if we need to extend the hiring freeze more than that because that's a line item that we want to um. Increase savings, we can do that. So, I mean, a lot, a lot of these, like, they, they are tough conversations. But like I said, I think there's a pretty sound financial plan here and there's more, there's more data that we have coming. And, and again, hopefully it's all good news.
So, I was in the override committee for that whole year, Lisa, before you came on board. And uh, I can tell you that uh, we took into account uh on all forty-eight versions of the spreadsheet. We took into account that the contracts uh for public safety for DPW were going to increase. Because we knew we were underpaying. And we knew that we promised the voters that we would hire people in public safety especially. And that we would not be able to hire people if we continue to underpay uh relative to other towns. So, those contract increases were already in the projections. And, I mean, it's telling that even with the contract increases, we're still not using as much money. As we projected that we would be using, right? And um, a, a lot of that is because we have been very conservative in uh, in the use of that. And I'll, I mean, let's be honest, a lot of it is because we projected a five point five percent increase in education. And they came back with a three point seven percent number. So, uh, you know, two percent there is what, a million dollars? So, um, that's, you know, so I think that then, I think we need to, you know. Not blame the contracts. Because um, I mean, the, the reason for those contracts is because otherwise we wouldn't be able to hire the people that we promised. The voters that we would hire if we are, are underpaying uh the workers. So, uh, and that was taken into account when we uh planned for the uh, the amount of the override. Fact, originally, the, some of the original plans for the override were for seventeen million dollars. So, uh, but all of that was included in the uh, in, in our projections.
I, I, I have to disagree. I mean, I, I, I don't think these, the, the level of these contracts were anticipated at that time. We knew that we had to move up um those police and fire contracts. It's our obligation to do so. I think that the um, that, you know, I, I, I never heard that we were with this override budget. Taking care of um police and fire contracts at this level. So, it's not a question of whether we do it or not. Um, I, you know, it's a question of um. Of, of, you know, how we um, a- a- at, at what level we do it and, and what did we plan?
I totally agree with you, which is why. I totally agree with you, which is why I included Nicole in, uh, in the police contract. So, I mean, I'm, I think we all knew, and I actually thought that the, I mean, I, you know, everything's on the table, right? So, I mean, I thought I'd be giving the fire department maybe close to even 20%. We ended up at like 14% over three years. In a time where we're significantly behind and other communities are going four, four fours and five, five and five. So, uh, you know, I would say that, that from a competitive operations standpoint, we didn't give them enough. Um, but the police department, that was a surprise to me that, that, um, we were uncompetitive, that we had some issues there. That's why I pulled Nicole into our, she was in our, our negotiation session. So I made sure that FinCom was aware that we were anticipating having, um, a higher contract than normal and what the impact would be. Um, so there was numerous discussions behind the scenes. So no, it wasn't anticipated in the prior contracts. And, and I, and I, and I'll be blunt about that. Of course it wasn't. Uh, if the school department was on their projections for hiring in the override, uh, combined with my contracts, we would have used up the override for 21. So the only reason why we're not using the, up the override for 21 is because the school budget came in better than what was in the override because they both delayed, um, hiring and they also used revenue and they did a lot of other creative things. So totally agree with you. The school department, um, because of the great work that Judy and Ellen and everybody did, uh, did not use up as much of the override as anticipated in 20 or 21. Um, and I used up more for the, the police contracts. I mean, that's the bottom line. But the bottom line too is that we are in a net better position than what the override anticipated. Um, and then of course now we're in a net negative because of, of, of the, um, the current, uh, state issue.
I, I'm just concerned that FinCom doesn't see it that way. And, and prior to this conversation, you know, they were, um, you know, cutting, um, our, our ads and, you know, we, that's why they cut the schools down 1%. So, you know, we, we asked for, it's fine. I mean, when you say that, you know, you were having these negotiations and Nicole was there, it's hard because we weren't there as we usually are. So we didn't have any, um, insight to these contracts until, you know, the past couple of weeks after they were already worked into the budget. So, um, my point is that we're, we're, um, it seems that it's very easy just to, um, say thumbs up to everything. Of course, we want to support our, our public employees as much as we can financially. I, I just don't know if we can do it all at once. And I don't know if we messaged that we were doing it all at once. And, um, it, uh, it, it's, um, I, I think the, the impacts are real on the budget, um, because it's, it's coming out of the schools. So, um, they had spread their, um, their increases over a period of time. And, um, I, I don't know that we are, um.
I, I mean, I have, I have to be blunt. What are we, what do we, I feel like we're arguing in circles. What are we aiming to do? If we're aiming to increase the school budget, I'm totally supportive of that. That's why I put in a higher, a higher budget figure than FinCom did. And I'm, I'm willing to support a motion on the floor at town meeting to, um, to increase the school budget to where we all think it needs to be. That being said though, I had a conversation with Judy and Ellen yesterday and they think that a 3% is reasonable. They thought that a, a 5% was more than reasonable for the future year. And perhaps they had some methods in getting it down to 4%, which is why I put that as an option. So, I mean, I'm having these conversations in terms of what people are fine, um, to do. If you feel like, you know, I've backed people into a corner. If you feel like there's more I need to do in terms of cutting on the, the town government side. Uh, if you think I need to be more creative in terms of coming up with new revenue. I mean, I, I, I need some clear direction because I feel like I'm doing the best I can to take a two-year override and actually still trying to figure out how to extend it to four years in the middle of a recession. So, I, I don't, you know, and, and the decisions on the school side were made on the school side. In no way did I say to the schools, hey, you guys need to cut further. Um, the only time that's come is, is really with this current FinCom. So even at, at, um, you know, if we wanted them funded at the one point, sorry, the 3.5 or 3.7%. Uh, you know, we, we could advocate for that. That being said, I know Judy's talked about some potential overrides. Uh, sorry, some potential retirements. Um, so they could probably reduce that amount. You know, we can, we still have time to work with them to reach a compromise, but I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm not quite sure exactly what direction you're giving me except for saying that I should have come to sooner with, with numbers and, and I, and I can continue, I, you know, well, I'll have these weekly meetings if needed, you know, all these, um, you know, documents I can make, um, you know, on shared files. So, uh, but I, but I will say that, you know, what I knew two months ago, I, what I, what I thought two months ago, I didn't know now. I mean, things are changing very, very rapidly. So, um, if it's just more information, I can give you more information. Just know that it's going to be a bit of a roller coaster because there's lots of new information and lots of moving pieces.
I, speaking for myself, I would welcome more information. Um, I would also point out although the conversations kind of shifted, um, forwards that when you're talking about staffing and public service in the, uh, public safety, uh, sectors, FinCom is looking at numbers and they certainly would understand your point about increasing our spending on overtime as, as, you know, a downside of, of, you know, holding staff levels down. So, they're, they're very aware of that. Um, and that's something to, to talk about. Um, I would also welcome more conversations with FinCom. I think they had the schools budgets, the, the school budget in front of them. So that's what they focused on. Um, I think that there is room for more discussion about our budget. Um, I hate, um, the, the tendency that we, we still have in town of talking about the schools versus the town. It's one budget. We're one town and primarily we're, we're a, a service industry, um, participant. We run services. Um, so our people are very important. And paying them what they, what they deserve and what's commensurate with other towns is, is important. Um, I, I, I guess what we're talking about is absorbing some of this deficit within our departments rather than on, you know, within the schools. And, um, the schools also have the benefit of this new increase in, uh, chapter 70, the Student Opportunity Act. So, um, let's, let's hope that that benefits their needs, um, rather than sort of becoming um, a vehicle for, for us to, you know, for us to, something to, to increase our budget, you know, it's, it's really should be school funding. Um, but, you know, let's, let's, let's talk about this rather, how to, how to move forward rather than trying to figure out what, you know, what happened in the past.
So what I would suggest is that we, um, pull together for our next meeting, um, the finance committee and the school committee, um, for next Thursday and the comptroller and, um, um, whoever else wants to be in the room to, um, just kind of have a discussion of what everyone's expectations are. Um, this is what, again, what we do invariably is part of the budget process. Um, I, um, I haven't had a, a, a conversation with, uh, the comptroller, um, about any of this yet. So I'm not sure where things are at. So, um, it, but I think it's, it's helpful to know. I mean, for instance, I mean, I, I, I don't know if we can, um, you know, at this point of the year, um, even affect our health insurance at all. And, you know, I don't know when we, we enter into those agreements and, um, if we can make any, um, plan changes, um, uh, you know, if that's something that we, we were, are looking to do, but, um, you know, for me, I, I just got this budget late last night and I was in the housing partnership board meeting, um, and didn't get a chance to really absorb all of it. Um, so, um, my questions um, about what has happened are about what the expectations were based on our forecasting and what the reality is of our forecasting. So, um, you know, I still have a lot of questions. Um, and, you know, to the degree that we, we, we don't take, um, charge of those things. It, it will be, um, you know, FinCom and, you know, other boards and committees will, um, will take a lead on that. And it, it, it may take a direction that we don't want, um, as we saw with the, the finance committee recommending 2.7. Even at 3% on the school side, that cuts what was promised in the override and things that have been planned for a long time on the school side. So, um, I don't think that a 3% school budget um, is, uh, is adequate. Um, so, um, but I, I don't know. I'd have to look at it.
Yeah, I think that's to that point, Mike. Um, I, I, I'd like to say, I don't know what line items you're speaking of. When you talk about, you know, like going from 5.5 to 2.77 or 3, what line items are being cut? So I feel like we're talking about a lot of abstract things. So on the municipal side as well, I think I definitely would like to take some more time to look at this budget. Um, but I think that might be helpful, um, to sort of understand like what you're, what you're speaking of, Mike, like what, what was promised in the override that is being cut. If Judy feels like 3, 3% is appropriate and she feels like she's getting what she needs, then what, what other things are we cutting? Cause I think that that would be important because when we get questions from voters about, well, wait, you said you were going to do this and now the budget's at 3% on the school side or even on the municipal side. What's been left out? I think those are, those are questions that I think we need to be equipped to answer. Um, and I don't know if you have those answers or if we need to talk to the, the school committee about that, but.
Yeah, the, the school committee, um, so I'm talking specifically about the school budget because that was just what was taken up by the finance committee and is the, kind of the, the largest, um, investment of the town, um, on a regular basis. So, um, it, I say bring the school committee in and FinCom because the school committee who is the one that makes the policy recommendations on what they need. Um, and, um, although, you know, Judy plans the budget, I think that, um, there may be differences in, um, what, I mean, they put forward a, a 3.7% budget. Um, it was cut to 2.7. I don't know if they're okay with us just saying, um, we have other general government obligations and we're going to, um, recommend it at 3%. Um, that cuts some of the things that were promised in the override, including, um, full-time aides and things like that, that have been in the queue for several years. So, um, you know, it, I, I don't know. It's not, it's not my decision what the school committee wants to do from a policy perspective. Um, so, you know, I can't sit here and, uh, you know, play God with the budget. If they're okay with 2.7, that, that's, that's what it is. I mean, that's, that's, that's fine. If they're okay with three, that's okay. I think they were, to Mariano's point, I think they were very conservative. And I think that they have been in, in recent years. Um, they haven't been putting up huge num- numbers on the ask side and hoping to get something lower. They've been, um, very surgical about, um, asking only for what they think they, they, they actually need. So, um, and I think that that helped us with the, um, with the override, um, conver- conversation because I think residents knew that we had deferred school obligations for many years. And, um, you know, uh, that, but I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know their budget. I don't know their asks. Like, you know, we had a brief conversation with FinCom yesterday and, um, you know, we just wanted some insight into where they were coming from. Um, they are a very similar, um, group of people that were there last year when we were having these discussions. So, uh, you know, I, I don't know if they've had a change or they're a misunderstanding, but, um, you know, I think we can, we can resolve all that, um, if we, if we get together.
Yeah. So as far as this, the school budget, uh, town meeting and FinCom only get to vote one number, right? So that's the only budget that there are no line items, right? Like in the municipal budget. So that has, you know, on one hand, the reason for that is so that school committees, because they are elected, they get to control that. So that's the advantage. The disadvantage is that it's easy for FinCom or like we saw last year for town meeting, for somebody to stand up and say, hey, let's cut $200,000 out of their budget because they don't have to say what, who they're laying off, right? They, they don't have to say what they're cutting, right? So it's always easy to say, hey, let's, let's save money there without saying, uh, what the impact is, right? So, um, so I think that the school committee was taken by surprise by FinCom's vote this week to just cut money. Um, and so, but Amy, to your point, I think it is very important to find out if it is 2.77%, what is being cut. Uh, my understanding was that anything under 3% was a layoff budget and that's why I was using the word layoff. Yeah. But really it's the school committee who will, at their next meeting is going to have to figure out what line items would need to be cut from their 3.7% ask to meet either a 3% or, you know, or a 2.7% or whatever it is. And then we need to make our decision politically, what will support at town meeting, right? So again, the yellow sheet, the budget, that's owned by finance committee. And if they want to put 2.7% in front of town meeting, we, you know, that's their purview, right? But, uh, we need to figure out, um, and we need to communicate to town meeting that, hey, 60% of the voters voted in favor of these things, that now you're being asked to cut, right? Or whatever it ends up being at. So I think we'll know more once, uh, the school committee meets, I think they're meeting next week, uh, to figure out uh, what cuts they would be making based on either the 3% budget or the 2.77% budget.
But I, I still think there's a problem because we're, we're putting it back on them to cut where they've already been very responsible in providing, you know, forecasting numbers. So we're saying, well, let's see what, what they decide on what they can do with these lower numbers. They already made the decision of what they, they need. They asked for 3.7. So, um, we're, we're washing our hands of any.
I agree. I think the 3.7 was, was very conservative and reasonable from them, given that the projection was 5.5% when we passed the override. So I absolutely agree with that, but.
What's the difference between the, the 2.7 that FinCom is seeing and what was, what was budgeted there? Um, you know, I, I, again, I think if we're only, if we continue to look at things that impact municipal employees like cutting healthcare, um, we're, we're just digging a bigger hole. And last time when we made a plan change uh, on the healthcare, you know, we, we signaled that it's something that we, we didn't want to do continuously because it's a real slippery slope. And, um, we had been somewhat successful in avoiding GIC um, level, um, insurance, um, and by coming up with our own plan. Um, but, you know, as we continue to chip away at the quality of that health insurance for employees, um, it, it, it really takes away one of the, um, the premium values of being a municipal employee. And, um, uh, unfortunately, a lot of municipalities have gone to that and, um, it, it, it may be something that we can't avoid, uh, you know, with, um, decreased revenues and increasing, um, healthcare, um, obligations. I, I don't know. Um, it's just, I think we have to look at responsibly where we can chip away at our own budget if we're asking the schools to also, um, chip away at theirs. Um, so that, that's my only question. So it's helpful to have them in the room. Maybe they say, well, you know, 3.7 was really, um, you know, we, we, we can make it without that number. Um, we can do 2.7 and, and, and it's fine. I, I don't know.
So I've got an answer for you. Um, so the budget forecast, um, had a 4.5% increase for public safety, uh, between fiscal year 20 and 21.
Okay.
So if I, I'm just doing a quick math of exactly what that extra 0.4%.
And 21 and 22.
So it's an extra $43,000 for fiscal year, um, uh, for fiscal year 21. So, I mean, I can cut their budget by $43,000. And then I just need to figure out the, um, the fiscal year 21. The fiscal year 21. I mean, I can, I can either, I can cut the public safety budget by 43,000 or I can absorb that $43,000 savings elsewhere in the budget.
I don't know. It, it, it's hard just to be, you know, working with live numbers that way. And, um, you know, I, I don't know what the. You know, impact of that $43,000 is, you know, I mean, so. I guess I was still, I think that there are a lot of questions and we should just continue the conversation with. With everybody in the room. You know, I mean, that's, I think that's why we do that. If, if, if the schools are willing to, you know, hold off on. Uh, additions on their side, um, and they see that there's going to be some savings. That, you know, maybe there's room for us to, to keep that the way that it is. I, I don't know. It, it's, it's just hard. It's a zero sum game. So, um, you know, when we, we make one decision, then it. It affects other parts of the budget. So that's, um, that's my only concern.
So the idea will be that we'll, we'll meet with school committee and finance committee on next Thursday. Cause I think, I, I feel like we're putting words in people's mouths. I just would love to hear from everyone. Um, and how people are feeling about the budget and, you know, like Susan said, the budget is a town budget. It's. The way that I, I mean, again, I'm sort of new to this, but the way that I look at it is if it's, you know, if Lisa is collaborating with Judy. And the budget is on the macro level at the, is. What we expect, then I'm confident and I'm comfortable because there's going to be a time when the. Schools need more money and we're going to have to cut back and it's going to be, I mean, I, I just feel like that's going to happen. I'm sure it's happened in the past. So it would be, I think it would be super helpful to, to hear from both groups. So that we can just, we're not putting words in people's mouths.
So for the, the next, um, meeting next Thursday, we'll invite the. Finance committee and, um, the, um, schools, the comptroller, um, whoever else is in town manager. Then, and be able to get some of this. And, you know, Susan and I made it clear to, you know, FinCom when we had it, just kind of a, a brief conversation yesterday that we weren't. Pressuring them in any direction of saying, um, hey, we don't like what you guys voted on the schools, you know, change it back. We're just trying to get insight into where they're coming from, um, because they, um, were taking a lot more. You know, conservative stroke with their. With their budget, um, expectation. So, um, you know, so, and I think we should maintain, let people know, we're not. We're not just going to walk in, into a meeting and everybody yell at each other because their numbers are wrong. Um, it's just. Getting everybody on the same policy page is important and make sure that the, the numbers align with those, with those policy decisions. So. So we can, we can reach out to, um, to them and. You know, and see what we can do.
So I, I don't want to miss the opportunity because, um, at those Wednesday meetings, it's not the full select board. Just to put this in context. So the public safety, just for 21, we'll talk about 22 in a second, just for 21. The public safety budget is $43,000 over projected. Okay. The school department, FinCom, what they asked them to do in terms of a decrease from the 3.75. To 2.77. That's a $500,000 decrease. So at 3%, we're asking them to cut 400,000. So to fully restore them, it's, we can give them 400,000. But I'm also projecting a $4.6 million reduction. In local and state aid. So. Given that it's a $4.6 million reduction that we're preparing for. To cut the school budget by 400,000, please put that into context. So. I, I feel like the fights or the, the, you know, issues of contention we're raising right now. Are, are need to be put in that kind of light. You know, so. You know, yes, it's unfair to ask. The schools to decrease their budget by another 400,000. Given that they gave a really conservative budget, but if we're dealing with the $4.6 million. Potential reduction in revenues. And I'm giving you a scenario where it's still. Giving them a $400,000 cut and I'm looking at making it up elsewhere. I think that's being very fair or as fair as I can be. Um, that being said. I'm the, I'm, I'm the conveyor of the, the projections. Uh, you guys can do whatever you want with them. Same thing with FinCom. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to put a compromise. Based on the information that I'm receiving, based on the information I'm receiving from the state and based on the. Information I'm receiving from, you know, from Judy and all the other department heads that I'm working with. So. But I just wanted to put it in that context.
Thank you, Lisa. I think actually having those numbers is very useful. And. Yeah, we're, we're in a different world than we were. Even. You know, February 15th.
So I, so hopefully we can, maybe once we have that, that meeting together, we can, everybody can move together on the same page. Um, and we'll have some time between now and then for. The school committee will have a conversation about their budget and, um, you know, everybody will. Be able to. To get there. I think that there are still revenue estimates that are coming out at the state level. So we'll, we'll be able to kind of sharpen our pencils a little bit and. Know what to expect and try as much as possible to. Maintain our obligations that we promised for the, um, the override and look at. How we can, um, plan for a, another operating override. You know, uh, hopefully, uh, after the debt exclusion override. So.
I would say check your email. Just about nine minutes ago, we got an email of, uh. The revenue projections that the Ways and Means Committee looked at. For the state and it's about a 10% reduction. So, I mean, hopefully the 20% reduction in. In a state aid is, uh, is a worst case and, uh, we might be looking at, uh, better than that, uh, from a revenue standpoint. So, but you know, I think it's always good to plan for both worst case and, uh, and a more, more reasonable case, right? So.
So you're, you're saying it's a 10% decrease that they're targeting?
Yeah, we just got a, an email from, um, Senator Lewis's office. And all the revenue estimates show for FY21's around. 10% decrease.
Um, so basically. It's a $1 million deficit.
I was just going to mention, there's no question that there's obviously changing information like all of you guys have indicated. And I also wanted to mention that I'm. In agreement with all the construction comments everyone has made, and that's why I haven't otherwise jumped in to repeat anything that you guys have. So articulately stated. And I think there's that next Thursday's meeting will be really productive. Thanks.
Thanks, Jackie. And if there are additional questions that. You know, board members have, I think the sooner that we can get to them, um, the better, um, because. Time to respond, um, and the departments need time to respond as well. Um, if there are. You know, uh, specific substantive questions and whatever they may be. I mean, I, you know, I don't want people to say, oh, I've got a, a stupid question. I mean, um. It, this definitely is the case where. You know, it's, it's very complex and, uh, you know, Lisa's been dealing with it on a much granular level than we have. So. You know, uh, any, any, any questions at all, I think. Will be helpful. And I imagine that, um, a, a lot of us will have the same questions. So, um, you know, hopefully we can, we can move forward. I'll reach out to the, the school committee and, um, finance committee and comptroller. Is there anyone else that? Anyone would want to include in that conversation? Great. So, um, we'll schedule that meeting next Thursday and we'll move on to the next agenda item. As I mentioned, we have this standing meeting, which is typically for the state of emergency. But Lisa, I don't know if you had anything to. Offer on that agenda item.
Uh, nothing that's been worked out at the moment. So, um, our noon call, we're. Just talking about some new guidance that's coming down from the state and federal government about. Essential workers going back to work. So. We just have to sort of talk about whether we want to be more restrictive. A lot of the guidelines there basically say like, if you're, you know, asymptomatic, you basically go back to work. So we'll, we'll have a more robust debate about that. At noon.
There was some, um, conversation that we had with the Board of Health. By some requests from residents, um, at the Gables. That a, there was a positive test there and what precautions were being taken place. What has happened in other communities is the. When you're in a care facility with folks that are particularly vulnerable and in, um, close contact. They, and someone in the facility tests positive, the National Guard will come in and, um, actually do, I know it sounds very severe, but it's, it's more focused on. You know, testing, um, and having as many people tested as possible in that facility. So I know that the Board of Health, um, met. Apparently they meet very early at like 6:00 AM on that next day and, um, they have been in contact with, um. Some of the, um, those care facilities to, um, connect them with the, the National Guard and the, the state. You know, to give them the, the state level, um, opportunity to have those tests done. Uh, so that's, um. That was another thing. I don't think it would require us, um, to take any action, but it's certainly something that they're. They're taking a look at. So. Uh, and that was a request from some, some residents and it's been something that, um, a lot of communities are, are, are dealing with now. As they try to catch up. It, is that your understanding, Lisa?
Yeah, generally speaking. See, I'm just, I feel like there's just information flying, flying around. I just got some guidance on. Emergency rental assistance program. So. As much as we can, we'll post all this information up on our website.
And, um, and also before I forget to, um, we are launching the Give Where You Live. A program this week. Um, so, um, it's actually, the website is live and taking donations. So, um. I think the. At some point, either today or tomorrow, the press release will be issued and, um, so reach out to as many people you have and, um, and then we'll, I, I guess we'll do kind of a greater. Ongoing pitch, um, as, as things happen. I don't know if there's anything else that you had on that, Lisa.
I know we're working on the press release. Um, I'm working on the letter to donors. I'm working on creating a donor list. We're working on an initial meeting with the nonprofits, um, working on sorting out some of the logistics with nonprofits. So, um, a lot of work is being done behind the scenes, but. It's a good deal. I mean, United Ways is putting a lot of. Pro bono time. Um, I think people are stepping up to the plate. So this is a fantastic opportunity. So glad to, um. Glad to be working on something like this. That'll help, help residents.
Yeah, the, um, United Way has been, um, awesome to deal with. So, um, thank you to. Amy and Lisa, um, for putting it together. Um, there, um, so we're not meeting on Monday. So our next meeting will be Thursday. Was there anything else on the agenda for Thursday? Anybody wanted to add or any other comments?
You know, I had a, a question, maybe, and Lisa is more than busy than I realize. But if you have, Lisa, if you have any, um, insight or information about. The small business loans, how that's going, are people able to connect and, and do that, um, application process? Just how, you know, not for right now, but for Thursday, you know, how is that going in Winchester? That'd be nice to know.
Yeah. Um, it's, I'll say it's difficult. Um, yeah. So we've been having a. Weekly Friday call with businesses. Um, Amy's been on those calls. We've had. State officials, federal officials. Um, we've been trying to give as much. Advice and support as possible, but, um, unfortunately it's a little bit of a mess.
Yep.
The peril protection program is a little bit better, but the, um. The loan program is very difficult because a lot of banks are either not participating or they have no idea what they're doing. Because the rules are conflicting. Um, so we're just, we're working. With everybody. It's important that our businesses are able to, to get this money and survive. So.
And there was a lot of frustration on that call with, um, local businesses that. You know, weren't able to even kind of physically access through the website, um, to, um, not on the, the, um, the PPP, but on the, um, EIDL. Um, and so, um. And I, I think nationally, there's an indication that there just isn't enough money to. Reach all those small businesses. So, um, I, I think that Congress is probably going to be taking up. In, in increase there. So, um, hopefully that will affect things. But you can see for our, uh, and, and. Some of the local businesses have negotiated with their landlords to. Hold off on, uh, rent requirements as well. So that's been helpful. I mean, I think that the community is supporting each other, um, which is good to hear. How long that can last? You know, without some sort of government intervention? I, I don't know.
So I, I don't know. We could bring this up at another time because I'm not prepared to make a presentation, but. There is other municipalities, um, unfortunately they have community development block grants. So that's what they're using to set up. Business emergency funds that are. Are at the local level. So I've been researching, um, whether we could do a smaller version of that. We'd probably have to. To use free cash, but to be honest, I think even setting up a small program, if it helps a business stay in business, then. That's all the more, you know, future tax revenue, jobs, you know, parking revenue and so on. So. I can have that prepared for next Thursday. I was trying to. Put together something to. Like float it by businesses on Friday morning. But it, it, you know, essentially requires that we, uh, we put up some government money to do that.
One of the requests, um, I, I think that came from Representative Day last week was maybe to consider. Waiving, uh, permit fees for some of our local businesses. Um, you know, I, I think that, you know, it is. I don't know what the financial impact of that is for us, uh, to be honest with you. Um, but. I, I think that would be helpful, especially if we're looking, I don't know if those come around the fall time when those permits are issued, but you know, that's. If, if we're hoping to get things back going again, and then asking for permit fees on top of that, I think. Some of those businesses were, um, we're hoping that we would, we would waive those. So, uh, maybe that, that's something we can talk about as well. But I'll, um, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Second.
On favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yeah.
Susan.
Yes.
And, uh, yes, for me. Thank you everyone for, um, being on this early morning meeting and we'll, um, pull everything together for, um. Next Thursday with, uh, the finance committee and school committee and comptroller. So thank you.
Thanks, everybody.